Good evening, the Raritan Township Planning Board is now in session. Call to order, the notice requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act have been satisfied by the placing of a notice of this meeting on the bulletin board at the municipal building, filing the notice with the township clerk and transmitting the notice to the Hunterdon County Democrat, The Courier News, The Star Ledger, and The Trenton Times. I have a roll call, please.
Chairman, Mr. Edward Giddings.
Here.
Vice Chairwoman, Ms. Donna Drews.
Here.
Ms. Robin Fatu.
Here.
Mr. Scott McDade.
Here.
Ms. Michelle Cavacchieri.
Here.
Mr. Dennis Concanon.
Here.
Mr. James Miller.
Here.
Mr. Glenn Sokolowski.
Here.
Board Professionals, Board Attorney, Mr. Joe Torriello.
Here.
Township Planner, Mr. Jeffrey Vacarella.
Here.
On behalf of Township Engineer, Mr. Keshe Darcy, we have Mr. Ryan McCarthy.
Here.
Township, oh, Township Landscape Architect, Mr. John Morgan Thomas.
Here.
And all other board professionals to ask for excuse.
Very good, thank you. I'm going to ask everyone to please rise for the reciting of the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence to remember the men and women in our armed services.
A pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next up would be reports. I do not have any report items this evening. Anybody from the board have something they want to address?
I'll just mention we're making progress in the work with the committee. We do have a draft plan that will come before this thing, work for review, and then forward along to the township committee for subsequent review.
Excellent, thank you. Engineers' comments? Ryan, got anything? We'll put you on the spot.
I'll get it.
Planners' comments, Jeff?
Yeah, I just wanted to address that last year, I know that there was discussions about possibly a few different elements, whether it's stormwater element or a circulation element. There was money budgeted for that, so if there's any discussion items, maybe not tonight, or just, it's in motion, so I just wanted to make that announcement.
Okay.
In some way, how I maybe some of us got an education on what is in.
So the circulation element will identify either improvements or ratings of different roadways, so that in the future, there's specific areas that there could be improvements or additional roads that are, that are added within the township. The last element was created maybe 2005, so a lot of it, there were improvements that were, if assessed right now, have been either alleviated based upon other changes, so it just needs to be updated and reassessed.
Well, that may be due to account concerns related to truck traffic patterns, pathways, et cetera.
It could, yes.
That's actually good timing for that, because it's a different town than 2005.
Yeah, and if maybe even if we're going to go down the circulation plan path, because it sounds like you have to decide which one, might be good at some point to hear the results of those traffic studies that were done that we heard about here for River Road and, is it Pennsylvania Avenue?
Yeah, one of them is still ongoing, gathering some additional data. We're actually using components to the mayor for acquiring, but some of the tools that our police department uses to place these devices that then calculate and create the data generated, it actually has the capability, and we're seeing the data, not just times of day, the size of the vehicle, so it's able to actually say different kinds of vehicles and all of the, yes, so I don't think we were quite aware that it had capabilities beyond how many, how fast.
Yeah.
So with this deeper level of data, I think it's becoming more informative. It's not obviously a full-fledged traffic circulation element that we would use in the master plan, but it is helping to feed the insights at a deeper level than we had before.
Maybe when, when most of the reports are done, Justin could give us a briefing as the planning board about finding some of the.
Do we have funding for both elements, or just one?
There's, at least to start, it hasn't been, there's no contract or any, any exact numbers, but it's, it's just a decision of whether or not to start both, or just to start on one and, and finish it, or it's more of a discussion with, with the board of what direction to go.
Do you have a recommendation based on me?
I think to start on both.
If you are ready?
If there's a, a preference, then we can then, I believe we would have to go out and for a professional service for, for this, but.
Is there any reason, Jeff, why that couldn't start?
Could, or could?
Could, I'm sorry if I wasn't clear. Is there any reason that it couldn't start? I have a double name.
No, other than just the, the direction of which way, so which, which element to focus on, then I could, I could either deal with it maybe as a subcommittee, or even a few members, just to get more clarity, and then we can, we can start the project.
Yeah, that might help just with getting the RP and the scope, and I mean, and I think for us as a board too, to understand, like, how that shape does begin, so how much work is going to be needed to do the update? I would assume the stormwater is a little bit more routine kind of update, just to reinforce some of the new regulations, and maybe even incorporate our storm utility kind of efforts into it, but the circulation, we've changed a lot since.
Yes, circulation would be more intensive.
I need everybody to speak into the microphones, because I can hear you now. Robin, yours, I know you have to hold it.
I'm special, I have to hold the button down, because I talk too much. Can I make a recommendation then, on behalf of the board, that we asked Jeff to move forward with both projects, knowing that they're both critical to the stormwater utility, and obviously we have grave concerns about truck traffic patterns in our town?
Okay. Yeah, I would second that. I think we should. So Jeff, you'll reach out to Karen and Karen Gilbert.
Yes, yes.
I assume that's where it has to be generated from.
This would actually be through, yeah, this would be with the board, so it would, I'll, I'll, I'll talk to Karen about it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
And maybe bringing a couple people along the journey on that would be informative, just so, I don't know. I don't know how that works, you hire somebody out to do it, but like.
Yeah, we'll, we'll have to go out for a professional service.
Yeah.
For this, for the, for both elements, but yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll give an update at the next meeting, as far as the next steps, and then if there's a subcommittee that's generated, then, then we'll create it.
Yeah, and I'll check with the mayor to see when and how we can provide some of the input that we've already seen on a couple of studies that have been going on. That data that's coming out of these little fancy boxes is pretty cool.
That it is. That's great. Jeff, thanks for bringing that up. Mr. Torriello, any attorney comments this evening?
Nothing to add.
No, okay. Any correspondents? Tell her I'm not aware of any correspondents coming in last two weeks.
No, sir.
So what, next up on the agenda are the minutes from our January 22, 2025 meeting? And Taylor was kind enough to circulate that to everyone prior to the meeting. Does anyone have any comments or suggested changes to the minutes?
It, I'm, I'm just going to make a note, it was brought to my attention that I forgot to mention that you, Chairman Giddings, had recused yourself from the second hearing of that night, the Joseph and Dispina, or Dispina McNulty application, so I will just add that.
Okay, very good.
So the minutes, the recommendation would be to move forward with the amendment of Ed recusing himself from that application.
Thank you. We have a motion to approve the minutes for January 22, 2025, with the noted change?
Motion.
Chairman, Mr. Edward Giddings.
Yes.
Vice Chairwoman, Ms. Donna Drews.
Yes.
Ms. Robin Fatu.
Yes.
Mr. Scott McDade.
Yes.
Mr. Dennis Concanon.
Yes.
Mr. James Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn Sokolowski.
Yes.
Okay, very good. Next up, we do have a resolution this evening. This is to appoint a board hydrogeologist. You'll remember that we had some conversation, and Vice Chair Drews did a short presentation on the hydrogeologists and the candidates, and so this evening, we have the resolution appointing this person to the, to the, the position, Garth T. Llewellyn. I hope I'm pronouncing his name correctly. Is there anything else to discuss on this? I don't think so. Thank you, Donna, for your work on that, and Jeff, you too. So, I have a motion to approve the appointing of Mr. Garth T. Llewellyn as Board Hydrogeologist Expert.
So. You can have it.
All right, I'll give it to Michelle. Are you going to second it? All right. Chairman, Mr. Edward Giddings.
Yes.
Vice Chairwoman, Ms. Donna Drews.
Yes.
Ms. Robin Fatu.
Yes.
Mr. Scott McDade.
Yes.
Ms. Michelle Cavacchieri.
Yes.
Mr. Dennis Concanon.
Yes.
Mr. James Miller.
Yes.
Good, and I think this also means that I don't have to say hydrogeologist again, sometimes, so.
If you let the applicant know that was needed to go through this process.
Yes.
Yeah.
That's great. Sounds like a great bill for the position. We certainly need expertise, so we've got three people sitting at this table and one next to me, that provides us such great input, so. Okay, citizens' privilege, if we have anybody in the room this evening who would like to address the board on any subject other than the public hearing that will start immediately thereafter, now would be the time to do so. We do not have anybody online any longer. Anybody? No, we do not. Okay, thank you. Next up is public hearing. I'm recusing myself from this application, so I'm going to pass this over to Vice Chair Drews to walk everybody through the, the hearing. Thank you. Thank you.
See you in a couple.
See ya.
All right, the next application is the public hearing on Doughboys, Inc. It's a minor site plan and C variants for addition and generator installation block 1601, lot 60, 164 Highway 31. Solicitor?
Good evening, Madam Chairperson, members of the board, Stephen Gruenberg, Gruenberg Law Office, on behalf of the applicant Doughboys, Inc. Angelo's Pizza has been in Raritan Township for over 40 years in this location, and they are in desperate need of a generator. In the past, they have had experiences where they've had flooding in their basement, and they had to install a sump pump, and with the storage that occurs in the basement for the restaurant business, when the basement floods, it causes thousands of dollars worth of damage. So if they don't have a generator in those emergency situations where the basement could flood, it is a real problem for the restaurant, and has been a problem in the past. We originally filed this application before the Board of Adjustment for C variants to allow the generator to take place, and during the hearing process of that Board of Adjustment application, questions started to come up about the existing location of gravel on the property, the existing features on the property, and it was decided the best thing to do would be to transfer the application to the planning board, because some of these site plan issues were coming into, to question. File a minor site plan application and address any of the nonconformities that appeared to have existed for many, many, many years, and that's even though Angelo's has gotten approvals from the township in terms of a CO in 2005 for the patio improvements and the building improvements to the back. But we really want the generator, and we really want to just have the, the building as it's standard or stood for many, many years to be ratified. I have three witnesses this evening, Mr. Coppola to testify as to the, the site itself and, and his use over the many years. Eric Rupnerain will take you through the minor site plan, and then John McDonough will give the planning testimony. And I provided the proof of service and publication of the notice of hearing in advance of the meeting, and I asked that the board attorney confirmed that the board has jurisdiction to proceed.
The board has jurisdiction. I did review it, thank you.
Thank you. Do you want to swear everybody in at once?
I would. I'd like to swear everybody in, and then whoever's going to testify, board professionals too. If everybody could raise your right hand, do you swear that the testimony you're going to give before this board in this matter is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Okay, starting from left to right, please state your name and spell it for the record.
Eric Rupnerain, O U G H, on the plan.
Angelo Coppola, the owner, A N G E L L, that's M C O P P, O R A. Ryan McCarthy as the board engineer, M C C A R T H Y.
Jeff Vacarella, Township Planner, V A C C A R E L O A. John Thomas, Township Landscape Architect, T H O M A S.
Thank you.
Before we go any further, let's just remember, we have our sonographer here, and for the recording, if you're going to speak at all, please speak into a microphone.
Eric doesn't want you to see that to me. Over here closer. I'm going to want to talk right into that microphone.
Got it.
There you go.
Okay. So, Mr. Coppola, why don't you tell the board how long you have been at Angelo's, at that location?
Since 1982.
And you've been the owner of that property since 1982?
Yes.
And what type of restaurant is it?
It's a pizzeria slash fast food restaurant.
And at any time in the past, was there a fire or anything that occurred at the restaurant?
Yes, we had a fire about nine years ago.
And were you allowed to rebuild after that fire?
Yes.
And you've had a prior minor site plan application before the board as well, correct?
Correct.
And as far as you knew, everything had been built in accordance with that prior minor site plan application?
Yes.
And during the COVID crisis, there had been an ability to allow for outdoor dining, correct?
Correct, and I was, I was approved to put outdoor dining to stay in business.
And that was in the rear yard of the property?
Yes.
And did you put gravel down and tables down in order to be able to stay in the business?
Yes.
As part of this application, we're not proposing to continue that outdoor gravel area.
Not at all.
And we're planning on removing that gravel and reseating it to lawn, correct?
Correct.
Let's talk about the patio area in the back. Is that patio, how long has that patio area been in existence?
Thirty years.
And as far as you know, that was previously approved and, and reviewed by the township, correct?
Correct. The zoning officer was Jamie back then.
And, and you received a CO as a result of the improvements to the back of the building and patio area?
Yes, I did.
Um, let's talk about the generator. Why do you need a generator?
Well, every time it rains, like today, if the power goes out, I was saying about an hour, you would have about two feet of water in my basement.
And what's, what's in the basement area generally?
All of my supplies that I used to have upstairs in the attic, and then when we had the fire, the township told me I wasn't allowed to have any storage upstairs that I could use the basement.
So all of your, all the storage for the restaurant business is located in the basement?
Correct.
And if the sump pumps fail because of no electricity, you're going to have a big problem on your hands, correct?
About $30,000.
Okay. The power didn't go out today, correct?
Not at all. I hope not.
But it would be a huge problem for you if it did.
Yes, it would.
We plan on presenting a plan that shows the location of the generator, but this generator is only going to be used in emergency situations, correct?
Correct, yeah.
The questions that one of the professionals asked, we're not changing any use, correct? We're keeping the same number of seats that have always been there?
Yes, sir.
And we're, you're still going to have the same number of employees, which is approximately four?
Correct.
And your hours of operation of 10:30 a.m. to 9:30 p.m. are going to stay the same, correct?
Yes.
And you have trash and recycling two times per week, which is always the same, it's not changing, correct?
Nothing's changing.
And your deliveries are approximately three to four times per week, and that's not changing at all, correct?
Correct.
Really just trying to put a generator on.
That's it.
There had been a question as to the number of seats. It's 86 seats was previous, and that's what you use now, correct?
Correct, plus, plus the patio when, when it's allowed seasonal.
Yeah, that, that includes the, the patio as the 86 seats, correct?
Correct.
And your parking's not impacted at all, correct? It's the same as it always has been.
Correct.
There had been, and one of the board professionals raised the issue of the landscaping in the back, the double row of trees that were required to be planted. Did you actually plant those trees?
That was about 25 years ago. I recall I planted them, I think it was J and J Landscaping. That's what the township wanted, and that's what I did.
Right, so the trees that are actually, appear to be on the Goddard School line, were actually planted by you?
By us, correct.
And nevertheless, there's been a suggestion to incorporate one row of, like an arbor variety or evergreen by Mr. John Thomas, the landscape architect, and we're willing to do that, correct?
Correct.
So, as part of this application, we're reducing the impervious coverage by removing that gravel that you had been allowed to put on, correct?
Yes.
And we're going to improve the landscaping by taking care of that one row that Mr. Thomas suggested.
Correct.
And we're asking for the generator.
That's all I want.
Okay, that's all the questions I have for Mr. Coppola.
Any questions from members of the board? Any questions from the public?
I will call Mr. Rupnerain.
Thank you.
Mr. Rupnerain is sick, so I'm going to make him stay way away from me. I'm moving the microphone over, but Eric, you're still going to have to try and talk real loud and slow.
Okay.
Qualification?
Provide the board with the benefit of your qualifications.
I'm a licensed professional engineer in the states of New Jersey and Pennsylvania, licensed or in good standing within both states. I have a bachelor's degree from Villanova University, and also a master's from the same.
We'll accept you again as a professional engineer. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Eric, do you have a, a plan set up there? Is that the identical plan that was submitted to the board?
Yes.
And has it been colorized or changed in any way, or that's exactly what was presented to the board?
No changes.
I suggest that we don't need to have it marked.
I would agree. No, I would agree.
Eric, why don't you take the board through the site?
Certainly. So the property is located on the easterly side of Route 31. The property boundary is highlighted here in yellow. The lot is approximately 20,000 square feet, and we're in the B3 zone. The property is 20,000 square feet, and it's located in the B3 commercial zone. The property is currently an existing undersized lot. As Mr. Coppola indicated previously, there are no changes that's being proposed or additions to the building outside of the generator. To the north of the property, we have the Starbucks restaurant that's located. To the east of the property is the Goddard School, and then to the south of the property along Route 31, that is a laundromat. This property onsite, we have 20 parking spaces and an additional 20 parking spaces that shared between the restaurant and the laundromat, so we have a total of 40 parking spaces that's available for patrons. Based on the current seating, the applicant requires 57 parking spaces. Again, the applicant is not expanding or changing any of the seating arrangements within the building. What the applicant's proposal entails, and this is sheet number two of the plan set. Again, it's an exact copy of what was submitted. No change has been made. And what I have here is the existing one-story restaurant is shaded in gray. The area to the back that's striped in this northeasterly corner, that is the existing outdoor patio. The area basically to the south of that, it's a fenced-in area, and that's where all the mechanical equipment are for the restaurant. And then further south, this shaded area, that's where the refrigerator, the walk-in cooler is located and enclosed as part of the building. The applicant's proposal will not modify the building footprint in any way. There are several existing nonconforming conditions regarding the site setback along the south side, the rear of the property, there's also an existing nonconforming condition, and then similarly, the existing building to the north, the site setback is also nonconforming. The applicant's proposal is to install a 30,000-watt generator. The generator is going to be located on a concrete pad. The concrete pad is going to be approximately nine feet from the property line, so that is an additional encroachment that the applicant requires relief for. And essentially, that's the applicant's proposal tonight.
So the, the board professionals had some comments. We're going to remove the existing gravel driveway, a gravel area, correct?
Yes.
And Mr. Vacarella has a comment on number 11, that an outdoor dining permit, I think you said will be approved.
It's going to be, if the board approves this application, then it's going to be in conjunction with that, so that no other, technically, if it was, if there wasn't a site plan, outdoor dining is a permitted accessory use that could be administrative approved, so it's just going to be on top of, if the, if the board approves it, just so there's no, no additional step.
Number 12, thank you. Number 12, we're not changing any of the seating onsite, and we're not, the RTN UA has already indicated that there's no issue with this application, not changing anything.
Okay, thank you.
We don't provide any architectural plans for the generator, and the building's been there for a long time.
So, so this was, and I, and I heard Mr. Rupnerain stated before, is that it's, on the plan, it says proposed enclosed refrigerated unit. Is that, is that, is that existing, and it's, and you're just seeking approval for it now, or is it?
It's existing, it's not a proposed, and it, it's what's there now.
Okay.
And has been for a long time. And I guess the whole issue was when that occurred, there had been a setback set forth of 30 some odd feet, and it ended up being 17 and a half feet, somewhere around there, but that's what was previously approved and COs issued and everything. We're not changing that at all, it's not a proposed condition.
Okay, so that, that was my confusion, because the, the plans did say propose. So what you're seeking then is a variance for the pre-existing condition in terms of, like, belts and suspenders to clean it up, because it had been there.
Correct, and we'll take that word proposed off the plans and make that existing, correct?
Certainly.
I think we touched on the parking on number 14, and we did provide the deed. And we'll provide further testimony from Mr. McDonough on what his observations were. Number 15, as discussed, we, we don't suggest the double row of evergreens, because that would be tight, and I think Mr. Thomas agrees, and we would be willing to do the one row to his satisfaction. 16 is just a comment that F A R is not implicated. 17, he's deferred to the township engineer regarding stormwater, which isn't an issue either. And 18, 19, and 20 are just your standard comments.
Counsel, before you move on, I just need to just speak with our planner. Are you satisfied that 14, that 13 has been addressed, and that no architectural plans are needed? Because you, you, I, I heard the explanation from the applicant, but I haven't heard whether you're satisfied or not.
I mean, based on the file that I, I researched, the 33.9 feet is the addition that they got approval for. I couldn't find anything regarding the mechanical equipment or the proposed enclosed refrigerator unit based on a board application or zoning permit.
Yeah, and that's why we're here. But, you know, the, the building is as the building is, and we're seeking the variances for that. And I don't, I respectfully would suggest that new architectural plans for something that's existed for over 20 years isn't really required. And I don't, I respectfully would suggest that new architectural plans for something that's existed for over twenty years isn't really required.
It wasn't, it wasn't a comment to require it for this application, it was more of a, of a comment saying that there was none.
Okay, so yours, I just want to make sure yours, because I had this as a potential issue to be resolved, I just want to make sure you're satisfied.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Thank you.
Yep.
With respect to Mr. Darji's report, we're willing to do everything. The, I think we provided the testimony as to all of these issues. I don't see anything here that we haven't addressed.
I think the only thing that we had was the, just the easements that were supposed to be filed as a part of the old resolution of approval. There's the easement for the off-site parking, the easement for the dumpster location that's not on the, the subject property, and then the easement for using the driveway that's on Lot sixty-one.
Yeah, I think we provided what had been recorded as part of that prior approval, which was the, I, I don't know if.
It's, it's in the.
Does it cover all three elements or just the part?
Yes, yes.
So I think we're good on that, because that was, I think, from two thousand and.
Two thousand and three.
Three.
Yeah.
And the site's been functioning since then.
Just a question, clarification, Eric, you can help us, they, I admit I didn't look closely enough. With the removal of the gravel area, do the plans note what the restoration method is? And lawn mix, you know, the typical kind of.
Yeah, it's going to be the typical stabilization measures to soil conservation generally recommends in terms of lawns or whatever, that type of planting mixes.
So you'd agree to comply with whatever the standard soil erosion and sediment control conditions would be?
Correct.
Okay, great.
That's all I have for the sick guy over here.
I showed up.
Items one and three in your report still conditions, items one, items one and three.
Yes, yeah, one, two, and three would still be conditions, and they've agreed to address those. There, it was just minor plan stuff, nothing crazy.
I just want to make sure my notes are correct, thank you.
And then I'd like to ask Mr. McDonough to come forward and talk about the variances. You want to use this microphone?
Right here. Can you hear me okay?
If you could give the board the benefit.
You can grab that mic.
You're gonna have to. That one's better.
I'll be brave.
You give the board the benefit of your qualification.
Sure, I am a licensed professional planner here in the state of New Jersey, that license is current, it's in good standing. I'm also a member of the American Institute of Certified Planners, it's our national certification, current and in good standing. This is what I do on a nightly basis throughout the state of New Jersey, I've been here in your great community before. And as I say, licenses are current and in good standing.
Oh, for Mr. McDonough's professional license, expert professional.
We accept him as an expert.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
John, you've reviewed the site, can you give the board the benefit of your analysis with respect to the variance relief that we require? And if you have any exhibits, maybe we can have that marked.
Sure, I will hand out the exhibits, as I'm handing them out. Your, your planner has laid out for the board the things to think about with this application, the relief that the applicant is seeking. We're in the B three community commercial district, and the app, the use is permitted. We're not here seeking any D relief, obviously, that's why we're in front of the planning board. There are six C variances that the applicant is asking the board to move on. Four of them are setback related, and I have some pictures to show you why I think there will be no substantially adverse impacts associated with those setback variances. There's the coverage variance related to the pavement that's there now, the gravel area, which is going to go away. And then you also heard about the parking supply, the twenty spaces onsite plus the twenty adjacent gets us to forty, where fifty-seven is the minimum that's required. A longstanding existing condition that's not changing as part of the application. No increase in the dining area, no increase in the seats, the hours of operation. These are all utilitarian in nature in terms of the improvements that the applicant is proposing, so parking demand on the site is not going to increase. With that, I'll start on my left here, your right, and I'll hand out some exhibits to help substantiate the setback relief.
And if you could just identify the package, and I'd like to ask that the whole package be marked as exhibit A one.
It's, it's going to be a five-sheet exhibit, and they're all drone photographs that were taken today, so it's as close to real time as we can get.
So if you hear of any drone sightings in Raritan Township today.
We don't do this at night.
Now this explains the activity. Finally got to the bottom of that.
So we'll take it through, was this A one?
Yes.
All right, A one for the record, five photographs that were taken today. I'd say they were taken mid-afternoon, so it's after the lunch peak, obviously, there's not a lot of cars in the parking lot. And was taken before the evening rush, I'll say, as well. The subject building is the brown pitched roof building that you see in the middle of the photograph at the parking lot in the front. Basically, what you see is what you, you get. One of the nice things about this application is the utility structures, the mechanical equipment, the dining area, and the generator are all going to be located in the back of the building, remote from the public realm, so none of these utilitarian structures are going to be visible to the public eye in the public realm from Route thirty-one. Second page of A one gives you a similar view of the subject site from a slightly different angle. Importantly here, all of the surrounding uses are non-residential. You've got the Starbucks, you've got the Golden Bowl Chinese restaurant, you've got the Goddard childcare facility. You've got the Flemington Elks on the other side of the street as well, so this is a non-residential area. We don't have a situation where we have non-residential use impacting adjacent residential properties. Third frame, we now take you to the back, this is sort of the impact area, we're looking to validate that which is there. Again, it's the brown pitched roof building. I think the first thing that will jump out at you is the nice framework of buffering that our applicant has provided around the property. Think, I think Angelo said these are about ten or fifteen years old. Those trees have nicely grown up and filled in and provide a nice solid continuous row of screening along the perimeter of the property to screen these elements that we're talking about this evening. Going from right to left, or from left to right along the back, you've got that addition that is going to house the, the walk-in cooler, which is setback at twenty-two point three-six feet, where fifty feet would be the minimum required. It's there, you get a sense of how well screened it is and separated from the neighboring land use.
I'm sorry to interrupt, your testimony was, is going to house, does it house or is it going to house?
It houses.
Okay.
And it's been in existence.
It houses the walk-in.
Okay.
Twenty-five years.
Thank you.
Next, you see the white fence enclosure, which encloses mechanical equipment. That is setback seventeen point seven feet, where fifty feet would be the minimum required. Again, the mitigation or the mitigative elements are there with that screening that you see in place. Certainly, these structures don't rise in height above the height of the evergreens that are around it. And then lastly, you've got that patio area in place as well, which is approved and not, I don't believe that's being validated as part of the application. It is as well, I don't have a setback for that. But it is not any closer than the refrigeration unit or the mechanical equipment addition. And then, of course, in that northern corner, that far corner, that corner is where this generator would go. At thirty thousand watt on a six-by-six pad would be framed by the landscaping that you see in this photograph as well. Plus the supplemental planning that came out as, as part of your professional's comment and the applicant adhering to that. The generator is going to be setback on the side, nine feet, where twenty feet would be the minimum that's required. And then in the rear, the generator would be thirty-eight feet, where fifty feet would be the minimum that's required. So those are the four setback variances that the applicant is asking the board to move on. Two for the generator, one for the refrigeration unit and that small addition, seven hundred and twenty-four square feet, and then the mechanical equipment as well. You get another view of the rear of the property and the effective screening that's in place in page number four on A, number two. And then finally, just sort of a top-down view to show how it all meets together. The remoteness of these structures from the road, the building becomes somewhat of a buffer, if you will, blocking any visibility of these structures from the road, and then the landscaping becomes the buffer in the rear. So the screening elements are effectively there to conceal any visual impacts of, of these additional structures. The lock coverage is going to be seventy-five percent, where fifty-five percent would be the maximum that's allowed. You can see in the back of the site on this top-down view, sheet number five, there's sort of a tan or brown area next to the outdoor patio area, which will revert back to lawn or to, to green, so that will be an improvement over the existing condition, which is presently at eighty-three point two percent. And as I just said, on the subject site and the site adjacent, you're looking at forty spaces being striped, where fifty-seven would be the minimum that's required. In terms of the justification for the relief, we're going to look to both the C one hardship test and the C two balancing provision. I think this board knows well that either C one hardship or C two balancing needs to be met. This is a case where I think both tests are met, I would say the justifications here are double strong. So first, under C one, all relief clearly relates to the land and the structures that are lawfully existing thereon. The lot is undersized and the site is developed, creating practical difficulties in complying. Again, we're working with an established site, the lot area is about half of what the minimum zoning requirement would be, so there's constraints related to the size and the shape of the property, that's a textbook C one hardship, and then also related to the fact that the building is already there, and we're working off of that. I think we could stop there and say the C one test is met, and this applicant will have met its burden. But I think the board can also find that the C two test is met, whereby the benefits of the application as a whole would substantially outweigh any detriments. The beneficiary of these improvements, of course, are the customers with improved service and operational efficiency. The project will promote multiple purposes of the MLUL at NJSA forty-colon fifty-five D dash two, especially Purpose A, the promotion of the general welfare. Purpose M, our planning goal for efficient use of land with infill of a, within the building footprint or the development footprint of the site. Purpose G, to provide for a variety of uses in appropriate locations. And Purpose I, the promotion of a desirable visual environment. This is going to maintain what is locally familiar in the landscape and not alter what is seen from the public realm. With respect to the negative criteria under both the C one and the C two, all relief can be granted without any substantial detriment to the public or the zone plan. The impacts here visually and functionally are minimal, if any, the improvements are well-screened and concealed. Based on all of this, I believe the improvements will enhance an established business with a longstanding commitment to the community. In that regard, the statutory criteria for grant of relief are met and approval is warranted. So I have on direct.
I have no questions with Mr. McDonough, he covered everything in my notes.
I was, maybe I missed it because I might have been reading.
I can't hear you.
Maybe I was missed it, but proofs related to the parking deviation.
Again, it's an existing condition.
Yeah.
That has existed without detriment, the parking supply has served the customer base and the employee base that's there. There's going to be absolutely no change. Again, these are utility structures, we're not increasing the dining area, we're not increasing staff, we're not increasing hours of operation or the, or the product base, the menu. So I think the board, the board can rest upon what has functioned adequately for years without any change.
Thank you. Any questions, Jeff?
No, I was, I was just going to add that even, even if the, even though the factor, the parking factor has changed, the, the required, the required amount of parking for the uses is, is the same.
That's correct, the, the supply will meet the actual demand as it has in the past.
Any other additional questions? Jeff, anything left from your report?
No, I don't believe so, I, I believe they addressed everything.
Yeah, I was mainly concerned with the planning, the planning variance, the variance release. We're covered.
Yeah, all of them have been adequately covered and testified to. Yeah, no other questions.
And Mr. Thomas, since we didn't like ask you before your, what would, in relationship to your recommendation for the single row, can, should that be added as a note to the plans, or how, how do we memorialize that?
Yeah, I think that should just be added as a note to the plan.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
I think that should just be added as a note to the plan, the, the, the plant, the single row plant, the hedge.
Okay, yeah, just so that, that, I was wondering that along, because it seems like the issue of the cross easements and stuff gets, got lost and had to be found again, and I'm wondering if it might be appropriate to note those easements were recorded, just so that in the future, if something needs to happen again with the project site, it won't be a question. Sounds good. That would be my other suggestion.
I think we provided them, so that it's been satisfied.
Right.
Maybe it can be referenced in the resolution.
Okay. Any other additional questions?
My stellar legal conclusion will be that I think that we have addressed all of the variances and the positive and negative criteria. And as quickly as we could move on, getting this approved, so that if there's a power outage, they don't lose thirty thousand dollars worth of product, that would be greatly appreciated.
Anything else? The only, only other note that Ryan, in your report, you had asked for the details on the generator pad. Could that be included as part of the applicant, the construction application, or how, how would be best to look at that?
I think it would probably be best to add it as a detail on the plan, it's nothing, nothing crazy, it would just, but it just makes it cleaner, so that way it's, it's usually a site improvement type of thing, so we would just ask that be added.
Yeah, your generator guy will probably have a detail you can just.
Yeah.
Provide, okay, great.
So the conditions I have is condition one, three, and eight of the engineer's report, as well as a single row of plantings to be depicted, to be updated, those, those are the conditions I have.
And soil erosion, a note on the soil erosion and sediment control.
We'll call it revegetation, or, or, or we'll just, if we can add some notes and just some details about how we're going to reseed the gravel area, I guess it's.
Okay, also on, on the plans?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's fine.
Yep. So I have what I need.
Motion with all those little caveats there to approve.
Second.
Okay, roll call votes.
Vice Chairwoman, Ms. Donna Drews.
Yes.
Ms. Robyn Fatu.
Yes.
Mr. Scott McDade. Ms. Michelle Paffa-Curry.
Yes.
Mr. Dennis Cook Addit.
Yes.
Mr. James Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn Sokolowski.
Yes, thank you all very much.
Thank you. It's crazy.
All right, so our next hearing coming up is Hunter Medical Center, correct?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Yep.
All right.
Final and final for proposed community services pavilion.
Yeah, a whole little building.
We already got that back.
Yeah, yeah, we have it. All right.
I've obviously been pouring over it.
Of course. Okay, can I have a motion to adjourn?
All favor?